Good evening, one and all. My name is Christian Klein. I am the acting chair of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington. Just a couple of messages for everyone. We are being recorded this evening, so all the comments will be available on ACMI. There is a sign-in sheet at the back, which we ask you to please sign in, especially if you're planning on speaking. It just helps when we do the minutes at the end to get your name correctly. So I am the acting chair of the zoning board of appeals. Our elected chair had to resign unexpectedly, and so I am covering in his stead. I'm going to ask the board, with their permission, that at our next hearing, we hold a vote for a new chair and new vice chair, just so we have fully elected members going forward. I would also like to welcome Kevin Mills and Patrick Hanlon, who were recently appointed from associate status to full members of our board. Very glad to have you onboard. And if anyone is interested in being an associate member of the zoning board of appeals, there is an application process available. Please contact the select board. I'm going to take the first two items and reverse them. Apologies to those who are here from Melvin Road. So we'll start with docket number 3612, 1314 Massachusetts Avenue. The proponents could come forward, please. So if you could introduce yourselves and tell us what you're doing.
I'm James O'Rourke, owner of the First House. Grew up on Renfrew Street, closet 87 through Valentine.
And so you're gentlemen here for a variance from the parking requirements? Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, I'm not sure if you wanted me to just present an overview.
Absolutely.
First House LLC is requesting zoning relief from Article 8, Section 8.01 of the zoning bylaw requiring one parking space for each four seats of seating capacity. The subject property located at 1314 Massachusetts Avenue in Arlington Heights, formerly the site of the Baylage Five and Dime, does not have any parking connected directly or indirectly to the property, and the applicant wishes to establish a restaurant in this location with approximately seven seats, which is allowed in the B3 Village Business District. And because of this highly restricted parking requirement, the location would not be able to open without the variance. After over a year of highly engaged planning with the neighborhood and community, the town of Arlington issued the Neighborhood Action Plan for Arlington Heights, which identified restaurant establishments as one of the most desired elements to the area and indicated it was a deficiency in the present state. In fact, the report identified food and restaurants as the number-one missing element from the Heights. Forty-two percent of the respondents indicated they would like to see a restaurant there. And because of the many remaining properties do not have parking, this desired use would be prevented from development. While the 50-year-old zoning requirement is limiting to the desired evolution of the neighborhood, one of the assets is that there exists plentiful off-street parking for some of the more demanding locations, including D'Agostino's, Penzi's, and Cambridge Savings Bank. This frees up a lot of public parking on the street and parking on the surrounding streets. It should be noted that since our approval from the redevelopment board and historical commission, the applicants have at least four spaces behind the building from landlord and multiple spaces from Arlington Coal and Lumber for staff. Though anecdotally, because the applicants desire to hire locally, many of the staff walk, bike, or are dropped off, but the applicants wanted to find staff spaces to make it easy for their staff, but also because those tend to be the spots that are kind of there for the entirety of their shift. So that's something that was something they wanted to focus on. What is unique to the Heights Pub is that the majority of its customers will be coming to the Heights when many other businesses are closing. The parking impact will be minimized because of the operating hours. The applicants presently own First House Pub in neighboring Winchester and report that their lunch business counts for only about 20% of their overall customers. The Neighborhood Action Plan also discussed access to the Heights, and the survey results indicated that 45% access the area by walking, while another 13% bike, and 7% take the bus. So nearly 65% of the resident respondents don't access the Heights by car at all. We expect those percentages to continue and even increase while the Heights attracts more visitors. The applicants are committed to minimizing the impact of increased activity and have spoken with many of the neighbors to implement plans to direct customers to public parking and away from private parking. And the economic development data presented to us indicates that the presence of a restaurant establishment, like the Heights Pub, will increase activity to support existing businesses as well as new ones and become the kind of destination that Arlington desires. As you know, Cafe Berada, Olivia's, and Flora have received exactly this kind of zoning relief from the board and have been an example of how the area has room to grow and evolve with very well-intentioned planning and relief. Just specifically on the parking impact, as I mentioned, three of the largest commercial establishments within a block radius, Cambridge Savings, D'Agostino's, and Penzi's Spices, have existing off-street parking, which is more suitable for the demands of their businesses. The corner of Massachusetts Avenue, formerly Brigham's, held more than 20 seats, which impacted parking, which does not now. It's a Bennett Family Eye Care location and has limited hours of operation during daytime hours, so that use has shifted as well. Public parking along Park Avenue is more than sufficient to support the use. There are 29 spaces of two-hour parking, and it's typically available, especially during the evening hours. Directly abutting Cambridge Savings Bank is Davis Road, a one-way public road with additional parking, which does not affect any residential units until Surry Road, so quite a bit of space there. In front of the Heights and immediately across the street are at least 15 parking spaces along Massachusetts Avenue, which are frequently open and available during all hours, daytime or evening. I know that the redevelopment board and the economic development plan that was submitted to you earlier has a lot more involved parking study that supports our conclusions, so we're happy to answer questions at this point.
Thank you. Is the town's traffic engineer here standing here? Can you speak to the study that the town performed?
Sure. Do you want me to stand here or sit?
If you could just come up so we make sure we catch you on the microphones.
Can I be named for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Daniel Amstutz. I'm the senior transportation planner for the town with the Department of Planning and Community Development. And so with the parking utilization study that I did, it's included with the Department of Planning and Community Development's report regarding the variance. And so I can go through it very briefly, just to say that I went to the area. So we started looking at the area of 1314 Mass Ave and seeing to look at the parking utilization within the area, and we chose sort of a constrained, I'd say, conservative bounds for the map that's included with the report. It's actually within about 1,000 feet in each direction of the address, which is actually a shorter distance than, say, a five-minute walk. So we tried to be conservative about the distance that somebody would park and walk from their car. And so I went out and created a map and estimated the number of spaces. Both counted the number of spaces that are already marked out there. There are some that are already marked on Park Ave, and then there are some handicap spots that are already parked on Mass Ave, but most of the spaces are not marked physically. So there's often more cars that can actually park on the street when they're not marked, because when you mark them, you give a larger buffer for that. So the estimated number of spaces that we created, again, was a conservative number. And there's approximately 150 spaces within the bounds of the map that is included with the report. And so I went there on three different occasions to do, basically count the number of vehicles that were parked in the area during the lunchtime period on a Monday and a Thursday, and then on a Thursday evening. Generally, overall, there was, again, within those bounds, there was not a total utilization of the parking capacity in the area. And especially on the evening time, it was much lower, perhaps 60% of the number of on-street parking spaces that we counted or estimated were actually being utilized at that time. So the number of parking spaces during an evening would probably be around 70 or 60 that would be within this area that would be well within a five-minute walk. And we also included some information, partly from the Neighborhood Action Plan, that showed that the radius of the five-minute walk and how many people, or a 10-minute walk, and how many households would be within that area. So there are alternative means to get to this location besides driving.
Does anyone on the board have a question specifically about the transportation and the parking plan?
No.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So the request is for a variance. And so for those of you in the audience who aren't as familiar, we can grant special permits, which are for specific categories, but a variance is a different animal. The requirements for a variance are written into state code. They are not a local ordinance. And specifically, we have to make a number of findings. The first is that owing to circumstances related to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. Two, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the partitioner or abolent. Three, that the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And number four, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance or bylaw. So those are the criteria that we need to evaluate this evening.
And if I can add to that, I would just say that for us, when we are asked to grant relief for a special permit, we have discretion. And I think that that's what Christian was alluding to. Whereas with a variance, we are really pretty much hamstrung in terms of how we can decide. And unless we find those four criteria that have been satisfied, we actually can't grant the relief that's requested. And without getting into the weeds too much, I just want to let you know, and I direct a question to the applicant in a moment, but the variance statute was redone in 1975, and it said the Department of Community Affairs condemned a common substitute for the statutory test. It said, "The temptation is to play the good fellow and substitute for tests specified in the statute and ordinance the following: Will the variance help the applicant, and are the neighbors complaining?" And so we're really well aware that a lot of people in the surrounding area are in favor of this. And I, as, and I'm not going to speak for the rest of the members of the board, I have no objection to the idea of this. It's just how do we get there? And so that's my question to the applicant. And I don't know if you've seen a memorandum in opposition that was submitted by attorney Falvey tonight. And just so you know, he cited that criterion that was set forth in the memorandum from the planning department. And in the planning department, and I think you cited, actually, in your materials as well, the question is, how does this satisfy the requirement that the conditions that you are trying to be relieved, seek relief from, are related to soil conditions, shape, or topography? And so Mr. Falvey, I know is here, and will probably speak to that. But his claim is that none of the facts cited in the memo from the planning department actually directed toward those issues. And so I would wonder if you could speak more directly to how you determined that those conditions are satisfied.
Sure, thank you. And I think, and I haven't seen the memo, and I was not a part of the planning department's memo either. We submitted our application and support. And, you know, this is a two-story block of mixed residential and commercial units, and there's very limited private access to the building. So the space that's actually under the applicant's control and subject to the application fronts Massachusetts Avenue and has a small access road to the rear of the building. So there is no open space connected with the property, and there will be no impact to the land or structure or surrounding topography as a result of the variance. So, you know, unless there is something that we're not aware of, there will be nothing that this variance would really engage the topography or the soil conditions at all. It would be renovation and use of an existing interior building.
But the statute actually reads, "Soil conditions, shape, topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district which is located," and that "or structures" is omitted from the other brief.
Right. And so the question is still, how do the conditions related to soil conditions, topography, or lot shape come into play in this particular petition? Mr. Chairman, could I suggest something?
Absolutely.
It's a little unfair to ask Mr. Betancourt essentially to require to remember anything that isn't right yet.
Absolutely.
And I wonder if it might be more sensible to hold this line of questioning a little bit more and give him opportunity to see the memo and to decide what he'd like to say about it. But otherwise, he can't really focus on what it's claiming, and there's a certain degree of people talking past each other that might be fixed if we gave him a little time and had him come back, where he's heard the argument and knows exactly what he has to face.
Certainly. Are there more questions from the board specifically to the applicant board?
Well, it depends if we're going to let him read the memo or not.
I think we should absolutely, oh, I was going to say, we should let him absolutely let him read the memo.
So if you want to suspend him, come back after one more matter and they keep going.
Or do we want to, while he's reading this, do we want to entertain questions from the audience?
That's a good idea.
Roger, do you want to pass on the round?
Yeah. And then he can come back up.
Right. All right. So we will take questions and comments from the audience. We ask that you be polite, address the board and not the applicants, and that you clearly state your name and address before you speak. And if you could come closer to the table, we don't have specifically a microphone for members of the audience, but I have been told that if you come close to the table, you will be heard. So if there's anyone who would like to speak, please raise your hand, let me know. Please.
I'm George Butler, I'm a resident of Arlington, Renfrew Street. I'm a regular shopper in Arlington Heights. This is a wonderful idea for the wrong place. And my concerns are, the amount of parking that's available in that area during the day would be severely impacted if this establishment were to open. Furthermore, I worry about the number of deliveries that were required and where those deliveries might happen. I also worry, as an environmental management consultant, about where the food waste, the trash, and rubbish that would be produced from an establishment of this size in that area. Most establishments in that area are small, they have a few people at a time, they come and they go fairly quickly. This is a change of use, a major change of use in that area. Another worry is that as we see more and more people traveling by bicycle and scooter, where those might be put? So I see people having to deal with a dual issue here with its volume, not just what's going to happen there. And then at some point in time, if they had takeout, what would happen with that and where that might go? And so the Heights is already very constrained. If you go there, most times between 10 and four or five, in terms of the amount of use that happens there. And your town employee here was absolutely right. There's not much going on at night, but during the day, there's a lot going on, and it varies from day to day, but it's heavily used. And I know when I go there, I have a hard time regularly finding parking, unless I'm up at the far end of Park Ave there, which for somebody with bad knees from hockey is not an easy jog down the bricks there. So that's my concern, is that the impact on the public health and safety of people coming and going from that area, and also ultimately on use of the sidewalks. Where is stuff going to be put? And that is an extremely constrained area, and that's the problem that these folks have, that the people proposing this have, and that I see regularly as a user of Arlington Heights. Thank you.
You're welcome. So my understanding is that, so we're only to discuss the parking. The use has already been approved by the Arlington Redevelopment Board. So this is sort of a two-part process. The Arlington Redevelopment Board has authority over granting special permits for projects that occur on major arteries in town, so they have already granted a special permit to the applicant to operate a restaurant in this location. They're coming to us solely for the purpose of the parking requirement. But I believe in the agreement with the redevelopment board, there was a statement in regards to bicycle parking? Is that correct?
That's right. They are requiring us to provide bicycle parking in front in the area around the restaurant, so we've agreed to do that. So, and we will work with them on the appropriate location if we're, you know, putting bike racks and things like that. So happy to do it.
Right. So it may not be directly in front of the restaurant where the sidewalk is narrow, but it would be somewhere that could accommodate.
Yeah, maybe up towards the corner as well, where there's a little bit more room. So, and also just because there are a lot of folks here that weren't here for the redevelopment board, we'll be handling deliveries and all the trash behind the building, so it won't impact the, you know, front of the building and Mass Ave at all. So there will be trash back there that is regularly picked up, so at least a few times a week. So that will all be handled. And it's pretty highly restricted by the board of health as well, and pretty highly managed.
Thank you. Yes, please.
I'm Grant Cook, I live at 16 Wallace Street. One, of course, I support this. I walked down under the bus today and passed Wannamaker, there was no cars. It was a single car that went across the aisle. There were three cars on the street. It was a morgue. But if you're talking about soil behind that whole complex, this deep grade running up to the playground at the lock stool. If you had to excavate that section, which is, I think, what you would need to do to put a parking lot somewhere, or behind Prime or the Panera Spot, you'd be excavating 200 skips with the dirt, a lot of there, to level that land behind there, and it would become a terrible nightmare. Right now, I think at least there's some sort of erosion protection, water running down that hill behind the complex. If you had to dig that up and park it, it would be a nightmare. I think if you look at topography, having a built parking there would be an environmental chore. So I really look forward to seeing this restaurant open, and I would, first, if my place, dealing with those people parking in front of my home, which I love because I don't own the street, and walk, and my family would walk to this restaurant. I'd remove my neighbors.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Allen. I live at 252 Lowell Street. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife, who's at home watching the kids right now. But I just want to be in favor of the board granting this variance. We live in a not-yield neighborhood. I see a number of my neighbors here. We anticipate walking to this restaurant, and we have had many discussions with many of our neighbors about how nice it would be to have a place that was within walking distance, where we could gather and we could get together for dinner or whatever. And so I'd like to very strongly urge the board to consider the fact that there are many people within walking distance who patronize this business on a regular basis without any effect of parking.
Thank you. So we want to try to keep it moving. There's a gentleman back here in a hat who raised his hand quickly. Yes, sir.
So I just want to support the gentleman who just.
Can I be named, please, for the record?
My name is David Harding. I live at 1121. I just want to support the gentleman who just spoke. I'm actually a regular customer of the locale in Winchester, where I go, or I drive over there, so my friends can actually walk close by. So I'd like the opportunity to be able to walk to my local pub, and in that sense, right, it would be a very good addition to the neighborhood. A neighborhood that's in transition at this moment, there's a lot of places that are closing down, and it would be very good to see the neighborhood come up with a local like.
A gentleman here.
Martin Middleton, 18 West Street, longtime resident of the Heights and longtime walking patron of many of the establishments in Heights. D'Agostino's, Trader Joe's, Brigham's, when it was around, my favorite hardware store. And, you know, many of my neighbors also walk. I think it would be great, as other contractors have said, to have something that we can walk to. The Heights has, you know, the town has wanted to have two thriving business districts, the east was centered in the Heights. The Heights does not have something right now like this that would bring a lot of people here, and I think that would be really important, given the number of businesses that have closed over the years. And in terms of parking, the restaurants maybe seem to be doing fine without dedicated parking. I don't see why the Heights can't have the same kind of opportunity. So I would like to.
Oh, there's a speaker's going to come up. Okay. There's a microphone. If you could just approach slightly.
Owen Callahan, I live on 4 West Moreland Avenue, and I just want to speak a little bit in support of it as well. I've been in the Heights since 1996, regular walker, et cetera. I, in addition to, I'm sure hundreds of people that aren't here tonight, would walk to this establishment. I think that, given some of the establishments that have come in and out of Arlington Heights that we've seen come and go, I see the storefronts that are vacant. It's a big complaint in Arlington in general. I think that the Arlington Heights community deserves such an establishment. I hear that we're going to give a CBD establishment. I don't know how many parking exemptions that's going to need, but I think that someplace like this, that the community, the entire community could gather, would be of value to the community and something that would draw us together as a community even further. So.
Excuse me? Have you had an opportunity to review the memorandum?
I haven't. I mean, I guess I'm not really sure what to do at this point. I mean, I just, you know, I'm trying to listen to, you know, who is speaking here, so I can respond, as I have been doing, to questions. You know, having, you know, object to, you know, receiving this at such a late date that this was submitted right before the hearing, and I'm supposed to process this and respond to it live while there's testimony from residents. So, and I, I mean, I get the intention of doing that, but, you know, I think that what would be more appropriate is if we would have the response, have the ability after the hearing to submit a written response to this if the board feels that that would be appropriate.
I just want to say, I apologize. I wasn't trying to catch you short, but the question that I posed that is in the memorandum was precisely the question that I came into this hearing with tonight. So that was the question I was going to ask regardless of where it was located, because it's really the basic element in requesting a variance, and it still needs to have a connection to the soil condition, topography, or lot shape. And so, again, you know, that's something that I think that was spelled out in the memorandum from the planning department, so that's something that I thought that, you know, your application would address. And so that's really what I was just trying to get at. I wasn't trying to get there.
Yeah, I mean, we did address, I mean, we did address it in the application. I mean, there is very little impact and connection to any change in the soil or topography there. You know, we have a existing building, and we are not touching the exterior. The structure is all interior improvements. We are not making any structural improvements whatsoever. And, you know, anything that's being done on the facade of the building is really aesthetic improvements and has been approved by the historical commission at this stage. But I, I'm not sure exactly, you know, what you would be looking for. I think it was mentioned by one of the residents here, that the impact of us adding parking to the back of the building, it would be nearly impossible, and it wouldn't be something that would be economically feasible. And that's, so that's part of. Um, and that's, so that, that's part of, uh, the request for the variance is that, um, it would really keep, uh, you know, if there's any sort of restaurant or food establishment ever in this location, uh, it would not be feasible for anybody to, uh, to open that if they were having to do, you know, any, you know, adding parking to the, to the property. Uh, it's just, it's really, uh, it's really quite impossible.
But I think you'd have to have ownership or control over the property that you say you couldn't use for parking. And I don't know that you presented that as an element of your application, because I don't know who owns that property. So while it may be true that you couldn't, without, you know, some massive effort and expenditure of money, be able to, uh, cut parking into there, I don't know that that's part of the property and part of what your application is.
It's not. The, the, any, any area, um, that, where we would have to extend into is, is not, is not owned and is not leased as part of our, as part of the property. So it is, the property outline is in our variance application, um, and it's shown in there. Uh, and even if we wanted to purchase of the property behind us, the land behind us, uh, it would not be feasible, um, to, and certainly would be, uh, of major, uh, impact on the economic viability of the project.
Understood.
So to, to require the purchase of that property in order to blast and, uh, you know, try to get permitting for it. So, uh-
Did you hear your head up?
I did, yeah. I just wanted to say, Angie Hazard, 270- Angie Hazard, 277 Oakland Avenue. And I echo a lot of what everybody has said in support of getting the variance. And I just wanted to add that since 2016, I've been part of a group that's kind of galvanized in the Heights to try and revitalize the area. We started with grassroots meetings, talking about what the Heights needs, and the pub always has come up since 2016. And this is the first time that I've seen a business owner that can come in and has the, you know, money to significantly invest in a location in the Heights. I've had, I've heard of other businesses who were interested, but they haven't been able to, you know, work with the landlords. And this is the first time that we've gotten this far, and I just think it would be a shame not to do everything that we can to try and help them.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Joseph Fahey. Author of the memorandum that, you know, Mr. Ben Poet's currently reviewing. Apologize for not having it prepared earlier, but I just completed it this afternoon. In essence, uh, opposition has been, uh, basically articulated by the board. I represent Sam Dagostino, Dagostinos, Delicatessen, Paul Stanley Sports, et cetera. And they have no opposition to the character of the business that's being proposed or the character of the petition. Uh, you know, I have a very high regard for Mr. O'Rourke and First Pub, and it's no issue with respect to the nature of what is going to take place there. The specific question is concerned of parking. Uh, and it's been indicated that the current zoning bylaw requires for, you know, uh, it's gonna require 16 parking spaces for a restaurant of this size, and we currently have none. And has been pointed out by Mr. DuPont, the, uh, there is nothing in the petition that suggests that this is a problem as a result of the shape of the lot, the topography of the lot, of the soil content. It's not a question of what violence will be done to those things if this restaurant takes place. It's, that's the criteria that's necessary to come here and ask for a variance for the lot in Carmelton, Massachusetts. And if, if, if there's a problem with that, the appropriate remedy may be to reexamine the amount of parking spaces required for an enterprise like that, so that this, this is not a problem. But currently it is. And there is nothing in the, in the traffic impact study that would suggest what my clients are supposed to do with people who are going to avail themselves and currently constantly avail themselves of their parking lot that they privately pay for and privately maintain. And it's not a problem because it's used for 15, 10-minute, five-minute visits to local businesses. But when someone now spends two hours dining, it's a challenge whether to be forced to be vigilant in maintaining their parking that they pay for, that they maintain, that they bargained for, and it'll be, present a problem with their current and prospective customers that are unnecessary. We, we have no problem with a restaurant coming to the Heights, and that would be great, but they're asking for a variance of, uh, a requirement of 16 parking spaces, but frankly, there is zero. It's one thing if it were nine or 10 and what have you, but this is, it's, it's not close to what we need, and the criteria that's been pointed out by the board is not there.
In the, in the language in, uh, in section 10 of 40A, um, it does say land, but it also says structures. And I'm so curious how you, so the, the, it specifically says, "Only to the circumstances related, the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures," and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district. So I'm curious if that referenced specifically the structures on the-
I don't know if the structure has to do with the amount of parking. And we're not here to address the, the, the nature of the structure. We're here because there is a lack of parking spaces. And the criteria, which the, the, the Community Development Board mentions, but really doesn't address, is it doesn't talk about the soil. It doesn't talk about the shape of the lot, which is perfectly normal. It just says that there's no room for parking in front of it. And there isn't, because there's a structure on it. And if you knocked down the structure, I'm not sure you'd get 16 parking spaces there. It's just we, as a town, have a bylaw that requires 16 parking spaces for 70-seat restaurants, and we're asking it to be ignored. And they're asking the board to contort itself into a position where it pretends that there's a problem with the soil, or the, or the shape of the lot, or the, the, the regular geographical disposition of the property, and there isn't any. We know this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, i- if I could, uh, so, uh, and we did meet with, um, many of the neighbors, including, uh, Sam Dagostino about this, who is concerned about his parking. As was indicated by Mr. Fahey, um, they have an existing issue with people, um, using, uh, their, um, their parking, um, when they're going to other businesses, um, and they choose not to enforce it. We would be happy to, and we have, uh, indicated this to them, that we would be very clear with our patrons, uh, that they will be, um, receive a ticket or they will be told if they park in private lots. And we will identify those lots in particular. Um, I, uh, would be remiss if I did not say that, I mean, I feel like that the, this argument is a circular one and, and really pretextual for what we're dealing with, with the parking issue. There is, um, parking available there that is public parking, and that is not just to serve Dagostinos. That is to serve the residents of Arlington. And let me say, I know that, you know, they've had a, a, a long commitment to the town, and they've been in that location for a long time, and they run a successful business, and I go there myself. Uh, and I also, uh, live in Winchester where, uh, there is, uh, Dagostinos there as well. I remember when we were proposing, uh, a farmer's market in the center of town, and, uh, there was one extremely vocal, uh, uh, opposition to, uh, to that farmer's market, uh, and it was the same issue. It was Dagostinos. They said, "You're gonna take all our parking, and we're gonna go out of business." We opened the farmer's market, and soon thereafter, they doubled the size of their business. Uh, this is how economic development works. This is what it looks like when you improve it.
Um, are there, other people have something to say that's significantly different than what we've already heard? And I only say that because we do still have five other cases coming up for us.
Sir? Uh, my name is Joe Walcker. I live at 62 Wallaston Avenue. I, I guess an alternative way to perhaps frame the parking issue is, would there be a creative solution whereby these other businesses or other parking lot owners might be able to work out some sort of a rental, you know, paid, paid parking, um, solution where certain spots in our lots were at certain hours dedicated to the pub, 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 uh, customers? So it could be a potentially revenue generating thing as opposed to a net loss.
I can't get up.
Yeah. So, and I, I'd mentioned before, in my earlier remarks, um, we have negotiated, uh, the lease of, um, a total of six parking spaces for Arlington Col and four from the landlord behind the building. Um, there, uh, and I wanted to respond as well to Mr. Fahey's, uh, argument regarding, uh, the, um, the soil and the structure. Um, the soil is, um, is concrete or asphalt, um, and the building, uh, it, for us to remove the building from that location, I don't think was the intent of, uh, the zoning, uh, direction to us in, in the bylaw. So, um, I think that we're getting far afield from what we're doing if we're looking to require buildings to be demolished in order to provide parking, and I don't think it's a modern understanding of, uh, that's the only way.
We'll have one last here, and then we'll move on.
Sure.
Jared Landsberger, 29 points.
Can you step up, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Jared Landsberger, 29, Florence App. I guess I have a question about what kind of discretion this group has within this, right? So do you have some criteria for decision? And I thought earlier we were talking about discretion. So, uh, there's been studies done. We heard from the traffic advisor. It was, uh, May 23rd, 2018, uh, group, uh, visioning session up at the Dallin. I'm in the Dallin. I participated in that session. I heard very loud and very clearly from the community, as we are here today, that this is specifically asked for by the community. And so I ask, you know, what, aside from these criteria that's written into the Massachusetts law, we in Massachusetts have a very strong sense of home rule, uh, where the local communities can make decisions for themselves. And I ask what kind of discretion you guys are able to make when you hear the community coming out in this size and, and volume saying that they want this use. What can you do, uh, to deal with these criteria and, and allow the community to have what it, you know, what it's asking for and intends to, uh, make, make feasible in its space? Thanks.
Sure. So Sean and Roger, I don't know if either of you wanna address that question?
I'm happy to answer that. And I'm glad you asked it, because, um, you know, my opinion, I agree wholeheartedly with what everybody's said in support of this, totally. But here's the discretion we have, and it's extremely limited. So we're in a huge bind. The town bylaw, which was just passed again recently by town meeting, says four spots per, you know, needs 16 spots for this. The only way around that is to meet the requirements in the variance statute. And I encourage everybody here to read it. Roger talked about it in Begin Christian, chapter 40A, section 10. And that has four specific requirements that have to be met in order for us to do anything. And they don't even necessarily talk about parking. They really involve lot shape and things like that. They involve financial hardship, substantial hardship to the petitioner if it's not granted, substantial detriment to the public good, and without getting away from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. So, and if you look at some of the cases, which I did, the cases, because if either part, if anybody's unhappy with this, and you have standing, you can appeal it to court. And some of these cases go up in appeal, and they say, failing to meet any one of the variance requirements is failed to the petitioner. All of the requirements must be met before the, the zoning board. Substantial hardship can't just be personal to the applicant. It has to be something that affects that parcel. It's supposed to allow people that have odd-shaped lots and things like that come before us. We hardly ever see requests for variance, 'cause they're so hard. They're so hard, and we're really limited. So, um, speaking for myself, it's a great idea. Great idea. The problem is with the zoning bylaws passed by town meeting say you can't do it without the parking. We have to go to that state statute, and that says they have to come in here and meet all of those requirements. If they don't meet one, we don't have discretion. That's the problem, 'cause this is a great idea. So, you know, we hope to continue to get more, and if counsel, you want to address any of those.
Sure. But, I mean, I, I think that, um, this has come up in context of, you know, again, um, Mr. Dagostino's submission through counsel. Um, and, um, I, I think that, uh, in, in our application, in support of our application that you have received, um, we did address, uh, those issues. So, um, this is, um, again, I mean, there, there is, um, nothing with this property. Uh, there's no additional lot space that we can use. We, we have, uh, with the landlord, uh, made an effort and agreed and leased additional spaces to squeeze them in the back. But again, uh, there is, uh, the way that this lot, uh, is shaped in the back, uh, is completely limiting for us to provide that parking. It is impossible. Um, and the only way would be for us to, uh, take down a substantial portion of the building, uh, in order to provide parking, and we wouldn't be able to get the required amount. So, uh, I think that there's a level of impossibility there. Um, there is no, um, the, because it is, uh, in the middle of a block, there's, uh, no availability for us to use any of the, uh, side setbacks either. There is nothing there. It's wall to wall. Uh, and the front is on Massachusetts Avenue, which is, uh, all concrete and, uh, not space that we have control over. So, uh, I think this is, uh, exactly consistent with the, with the prior, um, approval of variances that have happened for, um, Olivia's and with Flora, and is, is really in the spirit of, um, what the, um, uh, the, the bylaw indicates. I mean, it's, uh, um, this is exactly, um, the kind of thing that is, uh, referenced in that, in that first part. I mean, uh, I, I don't know if you have other questions about the soil or anything else that I could, uh, you know, explain to you on that. I, I wouldn't know what else to provide. I mean, it's, uh, I think it's pretty clear that the, the lot and the space is, is completely limited.
So if I could, I would like to echo what Sean said. I think it's a great idea. So again, and I feel that we are, we do have our hands tied because of the language of the statute. And if we thought that you've met the requirements, and again, it's in my mind, the soil condition, the lot shape, or the topography. So in, in my view, and just so other people understand, if there was actually a change to the zoning bylaw where it permitted this relief to be granted by special permit, which is where the board actually has discretion to make a determination based upon the things that you're all saying here tonight, that would be another matter altogether. It's just that the variance is so restrictive that we do have our hands tied. So that's the concern, and I'm certainly not personally opposed to the idea. It's just what does the statute say?
Do you, do you have your hands tied, though? Because what I'm wondering is, is it's not blocking one way or-
No.
I mean, who's interpreting the, the bylaws, right? So you, and the-
Can we not chat over each other, please? Thank you.
So it's a matter of interpretation, right? So, so he reads it one way and you read it another way. Um, and, and I'm certainly not an attorney, um, but it seems like you do have discretion because you are interpreting it one way versus another.
And it sounds like this precedent, which we really should give it up.
Could you come up there? Just a, a little, thank you.
My name is Kate Kassan. I live at 62 Wallaston Avenue, and I'm not an attorney either, and I'm very much in support of the business and looking forward to walking down. And heartbroken that the Heights is really a wasteland right now.
Total wasteland.
I don't know what time it is. You're there. You can park anywhere you want. But will, most people here live within walking distance. But, um, this gentleman mentioned that there's been a precedent of variances being passed with Flora and Olivia and Olivia's, and I'd like to hear more about that. And I think maybe that's an avenue. I know that is definitely, uh, would be considered if there was an appeal as an appropriate path forward, so I'd like to know more about that. Thank you for mentioning that.
I don't know if we know anything specific about when those were, were passed. There was somebody in the back who was making a comment before. I'd love to have them make their comment.
Hi.
If you're gonna speak loudly.
Sorry, Danielle, the 55th really circle. I, in the scheme of everyone here, I feel fairly new to Arlington, a couple of years, but this hearing, I, I understand feeling like your hands are tied, but it does kind of sound like, when we're talking about discretion, it sounds like the structure is, you know, has buildings on either side. There's cement, you know, so if you are thinking that your hands are tied, if you're articulating to us what they haven't fulfilled in their, I don't know what it's called, application, because it sounds like they're saying the lot, the size, the way it's positioned, the structure, which I think was left out of the- structure, which I think was left out of memo or whatever was just filed. But it sounds like they actually are fulfilling some of those really hard requirements in what you need to get a variance. So I'm not, I guess I'm hearing that it's difficult, but I'm not understanding what they haven't fulfilled.
The hardship is clear.
The hardship, the financial hardship, the way the structure is, the fact that there are things on both sides. And I think you, this person articulated that even if they bought the land, the way it's, the topography, all that stuff. It sounds like they're saying, aside from all of our emotional feelings, that we want some great restaurant there. They actually have fulfilled what you're asking them to fulfill and proving that they need the criteria for the variance.
Jennifer.
The problem that Mr. Fahey has raised is a problem that exists even if the parking solution is satisfactorily done. In other words, even if everything that was said in the report by the town is correct and there isn't a parking problem, that by itself doesn't get you where you need to go. In the application, it says to describe the circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography, which especially affect the land or structure in question. And the difficulty is that the state doesn't provide in general for a relief from the conditions of the zoning ordinance just because of hardship. Only some kinds of hardship count. And the answer that we have here, and it's only three sentences in the application, do not really address the way in which soil conditions, shape, or topography create the hardship that we all agree is there. And so the problem that we have under state law that hasn't, to my satisfaction, that has not been addressed yet, is how it is you can relate the hardship that we know is there to the particular circumstances which allow us to take that hardship into account. And this is all sort of moved. I know that it was there in the original variance criteria, the application, but there there wasn't really an argument. There's just simply a statement that is similar to what you've heard. The planning department also does not really address this issue. It just sort of assumes that hardship by itself would be enough. There is a question about how it is that this would relate to the underlying structure. Now, this is a really important issue to the people in Arlington Heights. And it's one that I would like to see actually developed in writing that focuses hard on exactly what it is that has to be proven and that addresses the other precedents that are said to exist and why it is that this is different from them, so that I understand that if I want to do something that I would like to do, I would like to say yes to this, that I can do that without violating my obligation under the law. And we have not got that developed at this point. I have the feeling that if we were to have to proceed on the basis of the record we have right now, it would be very difficult for us to be able to articulate the rationale that would allow us to do this. And just saying that, well, of course, you can't build parking on the site, doesn't answer the problem. It just helps you get to the problem. And so I would like to see this record develop more. I'd like to hear answers to some of the questions that people are asking. And I would like to see somebody take their very best shot at providing a rationale to this board that says that we all can do what most of us, maybe all of us, would really like to have done. But we have to do this within the framework that state law provides. And the state law that provides this is deliberately set up in such a way that hardship by itself doesn't matter. So the applicant obviously has control over what he wants to do, what they want to do next. I'd hate to have to decide this tonight based upon the record that we have. I don't think that it is developed enough and that there's been enough concentration on what the critical legal issue is. And the applicant, I think, has ways of helping to provide that improved record. But I would be very skeptical about our ability to move forward in the way that most people here would like, based on the record that we have before us.
Thank you. We would be happy to provide additional information if we would continue the hearing and supplement. And I think it's fair in light of just receiving, you know, this memo on this specific issue. Just to let you know, from the precedent that I had referenced, the other approved restaurant establishment, we presented our argument in the very same way and with almost identical fact patterns. So it is a little bit of a surprise to have this additional requirement. And I would appreciate the zoning board directing us to the information that they would like us to provide additionally, because we, it's very much in line with, if not identical, to the other applications that were submitted and approved for variances.
So you've seen the applications that were applied for the other?
Yes, and the decisions of the board, of the zoning board. So it, and it was, and the discussion around the buildings was the limitation of the concrete structure and the frontage and the, you know, being mid-block and very, very much similar, as I said. Well, I think Flora was exactly 70 ccs that they were looking for as well and were approved parking. So it's, I'm not sure what else we could provide, but I would need to look a little bit more deeply into what was responded to. And this is actually a response that was provided not to our application, but to the planning department's memorandum in support of it. So they have referenced things and they have noticed deficiencies that are not deficiencies in our application. But with that said, if we were to continue the hearing, if that is the pleasure of the zoning board, I would be happy to supplement our application for the variance and answer that particular issue. Or others.
Let me take a stab at this here. So this area specifically was developed around streetcars and the train. So there was the train stop at Park Ave. So this area was developed before cars or when cars were pretty infrequent. And when the bylaw, when we did the first big round of zoning in 1975, there was an, you know, an attempt to try to reconcile the fact that we do have parking requirements now. And so all the spaces on Mass Ave all of a sudden are there, and they don't have parking spaces. So what do you do? So my understanding is that at the time, the decision was made to essentially assume that each storefront on Mass Ave has the equivalent of four parking spaces associated to it. And that going forward, when you do a change of use, you're required to meet the new, the requirements for the new use. And so this storefront was granted four spaces. But, you know, that, obviously, the building was not built with that in mind. And that whole district was not built with that in mind. And so when you look at the, when you consider sort of the shape of the building and the way that the lots are developed, and you consider the topography of how that area is laid out, there are, there are places that do have the ability to park. So it's not, you know, this is, it's not every single space in the entire district. So it's not a general issue with the district. But a lot of the properties do have this issue, that they do not have access to parking because it was not a consideration at the time the building was developed. So if we accept that, that the reason that the circumstance of shape and topography is related to the historic development of the area and that those structures were developed with a primarily pedestrian and rapid transit bent to them and not automotive, then can we say that that is a circumstance related to the shape and topography of the structures, which is a part of that criteria? And use that as a way to validate going forward to the literal enforcement provisions or desirable relief in the qualification? Because this is going to, yeah, this is every single site. And if this building, if this had been a hairdressers originally, and we, and Ballicks wanted to open, Ballicks would need to provide 20 parking spaces. That's what the zoning bylaw requires now. And there's no way they would ever need 20 parking spaces. So I would contend.
There would never be a restaurant in Arlington.
Yeah. And so I would certainly contend that we could say that the circumstance relating to soil condition, shape, and topography of land or structures, especially affecting land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district, is that this is an area that was not developed for automotive access. And that that is the condition of shape and topography that would move us into position of considering granting a variance.
Christian, you were involved in, you were involved in the rewrite of the zoning bylaws that just came out.
Yep.
And it was passed by town meeting. Was there a discussion ever about this requirement? Because that stayed in place? Is that what happened?
Right. So the recodification process, we very specifically tried to not change the, change what the outcome of zoning would be from the previous to the new. We were basically doing a cleanup, working through it so that it was a clean slate, so that we could then make amendments afterwards related to these kinds of things. And so since then, there have been some very well-publicized plans put forward by the ARB in terms of multi-use and other kinds of things to try to change some of the density requirements and change some of the parking requirements in town. So I guess my question to the board is, do we want to consider the, what I was talking about in terms of condition one? Or do we want the applicant to reconsider and request a continuance and come back?
Do any board members or maybe counsel, assuming the chair, we accept the chair's argument on the first prong of the variance, you then get to substantial hardship to the petitioner? And I don't know if you've read the cases on it, but they talk about that financial hardship going forward for him, if he opens this, would not be the issue. It's going to be existing. Typically, if somebody has owned a lot of land, they can't use it at all. So what's your argument for financial hardship, assuming you get past the first argument here?
Well, I think, as the acting chair had mentioned, the, there is a hardship to this property that is under lease by my client. And there would still, there would be an impossibility on this lot for that to have anything. And if Ballick was coming in, they would be required to having the spaces that do not exist there as well. So it's not just that it is a restaurant moving there, even that's, even though that's what the community has told us they want. It is a hardship for that property indefinitely. And I think it is consistent with the other elements that have been discussed and survived the other applications and variances that were issued by this board.
So essentially, the hardship is that whatever use was assigned to the property when the bylaw went in place in 1975, that use cannot be changed. And that would be the hardship for the property.
That's right.
Because that would not relate to?
To one of the other impediments here, though, is that it has to be not only related to the soil condition, shape, or topography, but it has to, it cannot affect generally the zoning district. It has to be specific to the property in question.
Well, certainly, the people across the street have a parking lot. Cambridge Savings Bank has access to parking.
But everybody on that strip arguably, if they were changing use, has the same issue.
That is true.
So typically, just so the people here understand, what we're usually looking at for a variance is that somebody has a lot and they want to build their garage, but they can't put it in the place it would normally be because there's a whole bunch of ledge, but nobody else in the neighborhood has ledge. So they come in to us and they say, this condition doesn't affect generally the district, but it affects us, and we would like to actually move it closer to the lot line. And those are obviously much more concrete examples. And those were, are a little bit easier for us to envision and to deal with. I think the problem here is partly because we have what Christian has described as these sort of throwback building designs from before, you know, cars were being widely used. But we still have that language about how do you associate your particular problem with the land shape, topography, or soil condition? And as Patrick had said earlier, that's where I think we all struggle. Because if we all like the idea, we still feel that we have to satisfy those criteria. And that's where I don't honestly see that those have been addressed substantially enough. And, you know, that's, I'll speak for myself.
Can you do anything, though?
I agree. And they'll just be thrown back at us.
So at this point, would we recommend to the applicant that we continue and they work on their?
We would be happy to. And as I said, I think that, you know, as there's been additional issues in response to the first criteria, we can supplement our applications in response to your questions and in response to this memorandum as well.
And can I ask too, because I know that we should have access to them, but you have noted, as one of the speakers said, the cases of Olivo and Flora.
Yep.
I didn't see those in the materials.
Okay.
And if those are provided, that would also be something that I would like to take a look at.
And if we could be provided with a little bit more direction on the soil conditions, as I mentioned, it's, and we will provide the case support for this. It was not otherwise heavily discussed in the other cases. And so it was the least impactful one from my reading. And I, you know, so I'm happy to provide you with anything else. The lot is what it is, and, you know, we won't be able to make up anything that isn't there. But, you know, if there's direction on what you're looking for, we can certainly provide it.
Can I make a final comment?
Sure.
Jennifer, step up.
Just step up so we can hear you, sorry.
Hi, my name is Claudine Swartson. I live at 29 Valentine Road. I have to say, everyone, my head is totally spinning because it doesn't feel like we're spending enough energy. I appreciate, Christian, your efforts in terms of how to get to yes. This issue is an issue that surpasses this zoning board, which is dealing with the parking issue. This is about an Arlington showing some leadership and figuring out how we can all work together to satisfy everybody's concerns. Sam's concerned, illegitimate, you know, and he's a valued part of the community as well as, you know, the hockey institution. What we need to do is to sit a few people in the room, smart people, to figure out how we get to yes, and then leave there with a plan. Rather than doing a continuance, making this poor gentleman wait another month, draw all these expenditures. I understand, but this is ridiculous. So, I mean, I really hope that we leave here today, I don't know if it's the planning commission, I don't know if it's the town manager, I don't know if it's town council, but really saying, we are going to figure out a way to make a commitment to businesses that want to come in Arlington and make it work. We waited for three years. We had to wait several years just to make sure that there was a spot that could accommodate a restaurant, right? a restaurant, right? And so we really don't want to leave here tonight with A, a no vote, B, with a continuous thing that calls this individual more challenges. What we want to leave here with is a sense of the collective community has an action plan to address this issue. So thank you for your leadership, but I do hope it comes up even a level higher than the zoning board to get everyone together. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Miller, if you mentioned that it's going to get thrown back at you if the lawyer can't speak to it effectively, can you say they'll throw it back at you? Who is the "they"? At the state level?
And what are they throwing back?
So essentially, that's what I was going to say. So once we reach our decision, any decision reached by the board is appealable within a 20-day period. That appeal goes to land court, I believe is the first stop. And then to, from there, it goes to Supreme Judicial or whatever. So essentially, any decision, any decision reached by the zoning board on anything, the Arlington Redevelopment Board as well, is appealable through the court system. And so what Sean, Mr. Work was sort of saying here is that, you know, there, there is a lot of precedence in the court system for zoning boards, you know, saying, you know, this is great, we'll give you a variance, we think this is a great idea. And then it gets to the courts, and the first thing the court says, well, you didn't meet the criteria. And they immediately reverse the decision. And there is a, there's a lot of, unfortunately, there's a lot of history in the, in the court system for that. So that's why we're trying to be really careful, because we really want to be sure that whatever decision we make can stand and we can defend it.
I can just add one word to that.
Yes, please.
That, what I hope that we can get out of this, and which I think the lawyers need to go back and look at the cases too, is I would like us to have a defensible theory for why it is the appellate bodies will affirm this. Because if we don't have that, it isn't going to make this, this restaurant established any faster. I have the sense that it's likely to be appealed unless you work it out afterwards and the appeal is dropped. And if that doesn't happen, and if we don't have anything except the fact that we all want, what you all want, to go on, that's exactly when they send it back to us. And then, and then it's over with at that point. So with all the leadership in the world, when you have an appellate court, there's only so much you can do. And what I would like, what I would hope to have is something that I can look at that would say, okay, this is the theory. This is how those first two, two provisions, the first two criteria are satisfied, and that is, that's a fairly arguable theory that we've got a chance to get, to get by the courts. And I don't feel that, I mean, I think that Christian, the chairman was, has got something, and it might be helpful. It also might be helpful to find out more about what the thinking was in the other cases, so that you have a whole skein of cases that applies, that applies elsewhere in Arlington as well. I don't really actually know where that's going to come out, but at the end of the day, in order for us to, to do what I would like to be able to do, we have to have at least a fairly arguable, a fairly arguable theory as to why it is this meets the, this meets the, this meets the requirements of the statute. Now, I noticed that if only the town meeting and its ineffable, sometimes ineffable wisdom, would have made this a special exception, a special permit use, we would not have this problem. We would have had, we would have been out of here an hour ago.
Yep.
But we don't, we do have this problem because this is a very, very, it's a, it's a very, very tiny opening in the needle. And that's what state law wanted. It was just to get rid of people for whom it would be totally unfair because of some kinds of matters that the state looked at that gives you relief. And it isn't a general discretionary relief that allows us to do it because it would be a good idea. And that's what we're struggling with.
So you have, you have, just to be clear, so you say you've contracted for 10 spaces?
So we have six spaces.
Six spaces.
Six spaces.
The other question I have for you is how far back, I know you said that there's a plan there.
Yep.
But how far back does the property actually extend behind the rear of the building?
It's...
The land owned by whoever owns the parcel.
So there's a, there's a, there's a very small access road behind there, which is where we would take deliveries, which would still be very difficult to do. And we would store trash and things like that. And then it is, it is ledge and it is area that we wouldn't be able to...
But do you know how far back the lot line goes?
It, not far at all. Yeah, so it's just 20 feet back from the back of the rear of the block.
But you have the whole length of the building there, right?
Well, no, it's an access, we, no, we only have the middle block of the building.
No, no, but I'm just saying that that parcel is owned by, so it's owned from the bank, right?
No.
All the way back?
No.
Whoever, who, are those individually owned? That whole swath of stores?
Yes, yes. Those are individually owned. So we, that's what I was saying, we only, we only have access to the middle block, middle block of there. So, you know, we can't, even if we wanted to pile a bunch of cars in the back access road, because we, we only have easement rights to it. So, behind the other buildings. So...
And you're saying that it's ledge?
Yeah, it is, it is. And I think there's actually a brook behind there as well. So it would be difficult for, as I said, more than difficult, it would be impossible for us to do anything. And again, we would have to get rights to the area behind us because, in order to do that, to put those spaces, so...
I mean, ultimately, the determination of whether you want to continue, this is really yours, right? So, I mean, but based upon the comments of the board thus far, do you wish to have a continuance, I guess?
Yes, that would be the pleasure of the board. I think that we'd be happy to supplement our application with additional information. And certainly, as I mentioned, we responded to the application in full and focused on the elements from the prior cases that were really heavily alluded to, and there was a lot of reasoning behind. And the soil conditions, I mean, that was not one of them.
Yeah.
So we, this, it's a little bit of a surprise, and I'm still a little unsure how we respond to that, but we will certainly make an effort to. You know, my concern is, as one of the comments was made, it's, it's an additional expense and delay is an expense for my client. And it will have a chilling effect on other businesses that are responding to the neighborhood action plan. And it will say that we, it will be nearly impossible for us to meet the criteria as the goalposts continue to move for us. So that's additionally my concern, is that without some sort of relief from town meeting, you know, it would be, it would be difficult for us to meet any, any of these additional requirements regarding the soil or anything like that. I mean, it's, but I will provide the case law and we can discuss it further if we are able to be on the agenda at your next meeting. We would appreciate that.
February 25th? Excuse me, February, February 25th, we have two cases at night. Unremarkable large addition, maybe usable open space, but nothing of any great significance.
So we could certainly accommodate you on the 25th of February, if that's acceptable to you.
Sure. Is there any additional direction from the zoning board regarding the, that specific issue regarding the soil or the topography that you would like us to present on? I don't want to overload you with information that is unnecessary because it wasn't necessarily provided in other applications.
Right. Well, I'll just tell you this.
Yep.
I mean, that shouldn't be a surprise to that first factor. It's in the statute.
Yeah, we responded to it.
And I think what the board is saying is what we've seen wasn't sufficient to answer that, to meet that factor. So we would welcome your arguments to meet that factor.
Is there anything in particular? That's my question. I want to respond. I don't want to respond to, you know, I can have soil testing, I can have topogra, I mean, we can do all of that. But if there's something in particular that you don't see as far as this property, then I'm happy to respond to it. But if, if it's just a general lack of understanding of the impact of the property, then we can respond to that.
I'd just, I'd like to try to get away from this business about the impact of the property. This has absolutely nothing to do with the impact of the property on soil or topography or anything. It has only to do with finding out that your hardship is due to something about the soil or the topography or the shape of the property, or possibly the property and structures, that gives rise to a hardship that we can take into account. So for God's sake, don't go out and retain anybody who does soil studies. That's entirely beside the point. The issue is to look at the case law and to figure out how it is that you can fit what you would like to do under what the courts decide is what we can do. And it's, it's almost a pure question of law at this point. I don't know that there are any more facts that you can tell us. I think we get the facts, everybody gets the facts. The problem is, how do you fit it within the terms of the statute so that we have something to go on if we decide that, that a variance should, should be granted? And it's, you know, that's where your problem is. And I, you know, the chairman has already given you one line of argument. I think the discussion has generated other possibilities, but now it's your job to go out and figure out the argument that's go, that can persuade us that, that we can make a legally correct decision.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So we will return on, did you say the 28th?
25th.
25th, okay.
Do you have a continuation note for that?
Yeah. You seem to want to have you fill out a continuance, request for continuance so I can have the board sign it.
Okay.
We can do that right now.
Sure.
All right, so that, so it'll bring us to docket number 3611, 27 Melvin Road. Okay. In two minutes. All right, so we're up to docket number, I appreciate everyone's patience. Docket number 3611, 27 Melvin Road. It's a special permit under zoning bylaw section 518, districts in use. So if you could please introduce yourself, tell us what you're asking for.
I'm Harris Peterson, homeowner and resident at 27 Melvin Road.
I'm Melvanian, Alpha Construction, living on Bryan Road. Hopefully, you'll like to build our addition.
My name is Ben Ives. I'm an architect for the project where we're seeking relief from the zoning bylaw 5.4.2. We're applying for a special permit as we propose an addition that's in excess of the 750 square foot threshold.
Okay.
The addition is for 1,190, oh, excuse me, 1,190 square feet gross, which includes basement area. So the footprint, as you can see on the plans, is 24 and a third feet roughly by 17 and two-thirds foot. So while the addition proposed is for over 1,000 square foot, the footprint is actually pretty limited over three floors, because it's over three floors. We feel that the addition is in character with a single-family residential neighborhood that's around.
It was noted by the, so the Department of Planning and Community Development reviews the, the applications to see if they have any questions. And one thing they had noted was that the landscape and usable open space calculations were not done properly. So we would essentially have put that through as a, as a requirement on the, on the final decision to correct those to the satisfaction of the, of the building department.
Yes.
Yep.
Special services took everybody to review the calculations.
Okay.
We did redo them. They far exceed the minimums. I think the open space alone is in excess of 100% in that neighborhood. I'll get you a copy of the, of the new criteria of natural density.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
And then there was, the site plan, the existing peak elevation and the proposed peak elevation are different than the, what are on the architectural plans. Neither of them are in a problematic range, but I just wanted to flag that for you, as you're aware.
Okay. 24, 4...
So the proposed peak is listed at 117, and on the plan, it's at 116, 10?
Surveyor rounded up.
Re-bumped out. Surveyor rounded up.
Yeah, the surveyor rounded up, it looks like.
Okay.
So, we just, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a 30-foot, 35-foot. Okay.
And then I had a question. So the, the basement floor plan, so it looks like there's a, there's two storage areas in the basement, but you're providing an egress window from the storage area? I'm not sure why.
Yeah, I sort of, I wondered if that would come up. It's a, it's proposed to be a storage area.
Yeah.
Maybe it'll be a ping-pong table. There's a stair that splits the two sides. We have no expectation of it being a habitable living quarters at all. But we sort of were looking at small, you know, typical basement windows and realized that, why not just put something that'll shed more light? And then at that point, if you're going to go down two feet, go down three.
Got it. Those are the questions I had. Remember the board have questions?
And then I know that we've come across this before, so I know that Lanning starts putting in the comment about the stormwater runoff, and we know, if I'm correct, that that's going to be taken care of anyway as part of the process?
Again, so all they need is permission from the board
Yep.
to build an addition exceeding 750 square feet additional gross floor area. All the other conditions such as stormwater mitigation, the new tree bylaw will be in effect with this one because it exceeds 750, as well as all the building code issues and other dimensional and density aspects of the zoning bylaw. What they have to get by is the fact that we cannot issue a permit by right that exceeds 750 square feet. Any more questions?
Patrick, any questions? So anyone from the public who would like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I'm the neighbor's wife.
Oh, yes, please. Sorry.
I'm the neighbor's wife. I'm desperate for any support in the world. No good deal. Because I didn't know whether they did any more after I could, around the neighborhood, some of the people that came in to do work did a lot along the street and started plowings, and nothing was ever fixed, and we were left with that. So I was concerned if something like that happened. That was all, but it's probably the addition that's on the case.
Can I, can I have your name, please? I'm sorry.
I said it's probably the addition that's on the case.
No, I'm sorry, your name?
Mary Rose.
Thank you.
And if I'm correct, there, the Good Neighbor Agreement would be required to be a part of this as well, which would be notification to the abutting neighbors as to who the contractor is, who's in charge of the project, what the plans are, and so that you can, if you have issues, you have somebody you can directly contact. So it'll be, I think it goes to the abutting neighbors and the abutters to the abutting neighbor. So it goes two levels of houses out. So you would definitely be included in that distribution.
Oh, I, well, I didn't know whether I was the only one or not, I was the only one showing up.
Oh, no, no, it should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be everyone. All right, if there's no other...
So I will make a motion to approve the application as it's been presented.
Second.
All in favor?
I agree.
Post? Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your patience.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. The next one will be docket number 3613, 44 Lockland Avenue. It's a special permit under zoning bylaw section 813, non-conforming single-family or two-family dwelling.
Hi, Hannah Vaughn, I live at 44 Lachland. I also brought signatures of support from my neighbors.
Oh, thank you.
So my husband Sam and I are looking to build a dormer in our third floor, and understand that it falls under section 8.1.3 for open space.
I'm sorry, again, can I just have your name for the record?
Yes, Hannah Vaughn, I live at 44 Lachland.
Thank you.
This was just the attic?
Yes.
Dormer. Facing the rear?
Yes.
So this is one of the cases where the existing usable open space is zero, and we are changing it from zero to zero, which we have determined by convention is not a greater disability. I have no comments or objections, anybody?
Nor I.
The only thing I would recommend for the dormer, where the roof pitch is listed at 2%, which is the minimum it's allowed to be, is just to make sure that it doesn't flow below that.
Okay.
Better to err on the steeper side. Otherwise, I have no...
Sorry, Dr. ...
Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak in regards to 44 Lachland? Yes, please.
Hi, I'm one of the neighbors there, my name is Buck, here at 14 10 Street. I just would like to understand, typically with our addition, that when someone does a dormer, can you explain a bit what the criteria is that makes it when it's within and when you're considering a variance, how have you decided?
Sure. So for, typically when you're dormering, you're, so the zoning district is for two and a half stories, and so the question is, how do you get to that half? And by the criteria that's in the zoning bylaws, the area that counts towards that half floor is anything with a ceiling height of, with a height from the floor to the underside of structure that is seven foot zero or greater, under a sloped roof that has a pitch of at least 2%. So, or 212, excuse me. So, what that mean, what that means is that if you, what it's trying to accomplish is that you can't take your entire attic floor and bump the whole thing up, because that would be a three-story building, which is not allowed. But it forces you to, under that envelope, you can create dormers, whether they're sheds or whatever, to gain that additional space in order to make that area habitable.
And so that actually gave kind of a big picture. What's a case where someone...
You can just put a dorm, but it doesn't require a variance, and why is this...
So this is actually a special, this is actually a special permit. And the reason it's a special permit is because the property has a nonconformity to it, which is that it has no usable open space. And so if the property had usable open space, there would be no special permit process. It would by right, sure. Anybody else? Entertain a motion?
Motion that the application be granted, because it's been presented.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. Next up is docket number 3614, 20 Beacon Street. Special permit under zoning by law, section 518, districts and uses.
Good evening, board members. I'll let you get your plans out. So I'm the applicant, my name is Dan Longchamp, I'm the homeowner at 20 Beacon Street, and also prepared the plans here that you see tonight. So I'm seeking relief from zoning, section 5.4.2B, six large additions, seeking relief for non-conforming property to construct 1,270 square feet of new living space. The existing property's 4,931 square feet lot, with, right now is, on my zone, on my assessor's card, it's 1036 square feet of living space, it's actually a little less, it's like 900. So, that's what I'm seeking. We're removing part of the existing structure to provide this new structure, so the total net is about 1,170 square feet of new living space. So I have filled out some of the calculations in terms of what's conforming and what isn't.
Rick, you have a note on the open space gross floor area sheet?
I do, so again, we took the liberty of looking at the application and just reworked the numbers, they weren't accurate.
Mm-hmm.
They are, so the lot is, it's a good size lot, again, after the construction, if the addition was granted, it would still have usable open space at 52%. Right now, as it stands, it exceeds 100% open space, sloped relatively flat, much less than 5%.
Okay. It looks like you're not changing any of the, well, there are some adjustments to the setbacks, but nothing that would put it anywhere near the property line, with the exception of the continuation of the existing line relative to the right-side property.
That is correct, and looking at the conditions, speaking with a builder for the project, it seems that in order to excavate, it may need to push in closer to the property line. I'm not entirely sure that we can maintain...
Closer to the property line, or away from the property?
Away from the property line, yeah, towards the inside of the site, just based on the construction of a footing. So we would take, you know, any precaution to make sure that we wouldn't undermine the neighbor's property.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board? Does anyone here who'd like to speak to 20 Beacon Street? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion?
I make the motion to approve the application as it has been submitted.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next up is docket number 3615, 41-43 Pondview Road. Special permit under zoning by law, section 813, non-conforming single-family or two-family dwellings.
Hi, Eric.
Hello!
We made it. So I'm Juliette Packard, I'm with, I'm representing Dickinson Architects, and these are our clients, Emma Murphy and Drew Diddo, and they, and Kathy Murphy.
My mother.
And...
We're the homeowners.
They're the homeowners of 41 through 43 Pondview Road. Emma and Drew specifically own 43, the upstairs unit. 41?
Oh, really?
Okay, 41 upstairs unit. So, 41 through 43 Pondview Road is a non-conforming lot with a non-conforming two-family house. Drew and Emma live in the second floor unit, would like to finish their attic as a half-story, so they may have a third bedroom. They are seeking to increase the gross square footage of the house, therefore, they need relief from by law section 813B, which states that usable open space shall not be less than 30% of the gross square footage. The current open space is 14.88%. The proposed open space is 14.05%. This is a drop in usable open space by only 3/4 of a percent. So, we brought, I guess you guys have smaller packets, but we brought elevation showing what we're proposing, so two dormers, very similar to the docket a couple ago. So, existing, proposed, so the largest one would go over here.
And that's the side that faces the pond?
That's the side facing pond, yeah. So I think it's Prince Dinner, yes, Prince Road, so accommodates a bedroom and a bathroom. And then on the other side of the house, there's a smaller shed dormer that accommodates a stair, which is greatly needed, because you bump your head if you didn't have a dormer there.
Oh, yeah. So the dormer that's on the side opposite, is that staring, I noticed that the abutting house on that side has a very large dormer facing, yes, that one, right there. Are you gonna stare into each other, or are you just far enough beyond?
That's the other side, right? This is the side facing our neighbor's. I don't think we will stare into each other, because, and I could be wrong, but I think that their dormer starts a little bit farther back, and the dormer over the stairs is a little bit further forward.
Okay.
But even if we do stare into each other, it's just the staircase, so it's just the transient, we won't be spending time in that space.
And the height of the window, too, will probably be mostly above
Okay.
...your eyes and location, and we can make it smaller to look by the theater.
We saw the window. We stare at each other today from our bedroom, so we're friendly.
And so do you guys wanna add a bit about why you feel that the increase is worth it?
The need?
For it, yeah.
Yes, we're seeking relief and to add these dormers to, so that we can have a third bedroom. Our unit today is a two-bedroom, and we moved to Arlington in 2017, and we really like it here, and would like to stay here for the next 30-plus years, and grow our family, and having the third bedroom would make that doable.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, just having the option to expand your family in this neighborhood, also, it adds social value to the neighborhood, adding a third bedroom adds monetary value, because increases the value of the house, which therefore ultimately increases the value of the neighborhood, so it's a win-win.
Any questions from the board?
There you go.
So anyone here who'd like to speak to this Pondview Road?
I'm in favor.
And I would just note from the earlier decision that we got today, that when this was approved back not very long ago...
Right, I have a copy of that.
There was no open space at the time, what's all...
That is correct.
So by doing what they did at the time, they actually increased it, and so had they increased it to the number that they're now seeking to use, it would have been permitted as well.
To show them the picture of our little backyard.
Yeah, I think they raised the garage, which gave them some open space.
Correct.
With the garage there, they had...
Yeah.
Yes, this is our new area, since our garage would be a little tiny backyard.
No. And the reason for the decrease in the usable open space has to do with the increase in the gross floor area, and has nothing to do with the size of the yard.
Right.
And so then the only question before us is, is the minor adjustment in the amount of usable open space. Is there any issue with the seven criteria? And I see none in the planning department, certainly saw none either. That in mind, I'll entertain a motion?
Motion for yourself, also.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right. So we got one more item on the docket.
We have rules and regulations.
Rules and regs. So luckily, we get to do away with one. So the adjustments to the comprehensive permit by law, I submitted to council, who asked to submit it to John Witten, who wrote the original and is our consultant for comprehensive permits, he has not gotten back to me, so I'm gonna ask that we not discuss that one. The other one, I know I printed, and I know I brought it. So from, so we had voted that we were okay with these last time, but we wanted to pass them through council, so the, our general rules and regulations. I had a couple comments back from Doug, and I forwarded you guys, the changes, one had to do with the section 225 on the online posting of documents, which is a little more forceful in terms of documentation can be posted, that we will require the documents come to us, come with a PDF copy, with the understanding that that will be made publicly available, either as a part of the agenda or on the town's website. So we'll have the, we will have the content and the ability to post the content. We are including that, and then there was, under 333, he thought it was important to add something about, the public shall adhere to rules of decorum during debate, because we didn't really have anything about that, and he thought that that was important to include, because it gives us a little bit of teeth if somebody's operating outside of that, that we can...
Can we make sure Mr. Mills reads this paragraph?
And then there was...
I think you're in power, I'm gonna ask you a question about that.
Right, right, right. Yes, please.
I don't actually remember Robert's rules, having specific things about decorum, as opposed to the general rules of procedure that you usually think about when you talk about them, and I'm just wondering whether or not we have some specific section or part of Robert's rules that may refer to this.
So, yeah, I mean, essentially, the rules on decorum are mostly, you know, that you listen politely, you don't shout over somebody else, it's those pieces.
Is this language focusing on your show of personalities and things like that, is that from Robert's rules, or is that language put in by town council or somebody else?
So it would've been me. It was a, the chair of listening, it was focusing on your show of personalities and what he questioning was. I think that those, that came out of a conversation between myself and council, as a way to try to, I think it came about primarily because we were discussing this immediately after the first return hearing on the Mugard property, and there was a lot of heated debate, and there was debate going in directions where it shouldn't, so we wanted to make sure we included that.
And my sense is, everything after the word "including" is absolutely right on, I'm just a little bit worried about referring to Robert's rules unless we check Robert's rules, and I'm certain that when somebody else does that, then they've been excluded from the hearing, that they don't find the rule that does the thing.
So if we were to actually, so if we struck Robert's rules, and just said, members of the public shall adhere to the rules of decorum, add the word "rules," or, I guess, strike the word "Robert's," so we'd say, shall adhere to the rules of decorum during a debate, including being polite addressing, and we'll just leave it at that?
Yeah, that'd be fine with me.
Is there objection?
Yep.
Oh, and then the last one, in section 343, voting members of the board shall sign the official copy of the written decision, either in person or in electronic format acceptable to the town's group, so that we don't have to keep breaking down, and I don't have to keep breaking through the back door
Doc, you sign.
Seven o'clock at night?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that in mind, I will entertain a motion on the rules for the zoning board of appeals.
This is subject to anything that we get back from, or...
So this is, this has been vetted by a council, so this would be our final...
This is it.
This is it, with, as submitted with the word "Robert's struck."
Okay. I move that the board accept these rules with the striking... I moved that the board accept these rules with the striking of the word "Robert's." Just "Robert's," right?
Yep. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to be clear, so I can now accept electronic signatures?
Yep.
And I can file the decisions, sign electronic meeting with the clerk and secretary of state, wherever else they may go.
How do we do that?
As a practical matter, how do we do multiple electronic signatures? Will you, will, because are we gonna be able to each send back a signature page? Or, you follow me?
Yeah, no, absolutely. What's the, do you know what the procedure would be to do this?
I don't, so I'm gonna figure that out. But I've been trying to get this, I've been trying to get this in for a while, simply because this board is pretty good, but in the past, it's been tough getting the guys to get that signature, and I only have a certain amount of time to do it.
Yeah.
While we work on how we're gonna do it, but the fact is that we've gotten a green light to go in that direction, and it's huge. What I'm starting to do is do a draft decision, send it out to the board for your comments, get it back to me. I think in the time where I can write this up, we'll figure that part out.
Okay.
Is, is that, this is, I'm just not a technical person, is that, I know Doc is gonna use it with, or clients use it, but is that something where we have to have the program?
Yes.
So I'm sure it's easily downloadable, right? Must be.
We can't be the owner that's running into this problem of putting multiple electronic signatures on one page, and you have to ask somebody at 20 how to do it.
So I get purchase and sale agreements all the time with those, so...
So to make the rules and regulations official?
Yes.
Do we need to provide you with a signed copy? How does that work?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to Doug.
Okay.
As long as you have already vetted it, it sounds like you guys have it.
Yep.
He's probably gonna have to know about deleting the "Roberts" out of the Robert's rule, but then we can go forward with it.
Okay.
I'll ask him how we can officially adopt that.
Yep, perfect. And then hopefully I'll hear back from him in not so long about the comprehensive permit rules.
Okay.
Excellent.
And when is the next Mugar, Mugar meeting?
It's, my understanding is that we're supposed to receive documentation in March, and the next hearing would be in April.
So it was April 14th.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
We're gonna have the main town hall.
Oh, wait.
Yep.
Change it anyway.
Is there any other business before the zoning board appeals?
No, vote to, or motion to adjourn.
I just have a procedural question. Yeah. You have 20 days to appeal any decision, right? Correct. And so after that point, be in touch with the building department? Or how, how is that final, I guess, the decision?
Contact zoning board of appeals. I'll step you through it.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you so much. Perfect. Thank you.
Zoning board of appeals is easily reached online. Go to the website.
Okay.
And just give me the information, and we'll get back to you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
What's your name, please?
Dan, Dan Longchamp.
Okay.
At 20 Beacon. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen. All right, I heard a motion to adjourn on table?
Yes, adjourn.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.